Counselor Silk.
Heavenly Father, we're grateful for this opportunity we have to gather together as council and members of the A and members of the community and pray that as we listen to the presentations that are being going to be made and as we deliberate upon the issues of this council, we pray for guidance as we do so and pray for wisdom in the things that we talk about and ask for thy spirit to be with us in these things we pray for in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. So I'd like to call the meeting to order and recognize in the delegation, our Dog Park delegation. We'll hear from them in just a minute and Channel thirty-two and Temple City Star, thank you for being here. Any additions to our agenda at all?
Move to adopt the agenda.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. All right. Dog Park delegation, if you want to come up, be happy to hear from you. Yep, yeah, you bet.
You're just gonna stay there? (laughing) Sounds good. My name is Debbie Henninger and this is Cade Romerl. We are just helpful. Okay. That's way easier. Thank you. We are two members of the Cardston Dog Park Committee. It's an informal committee that we've rounded up from local residents because we are interested in and we're the advocates of implementing a off-leash dog park here in town. There is currently over a hundred and fifty people on our group. We meet about two, two to three times a month trying to get this ball rolling and we are now at the point where we're coming to you with a proposal to assist us in getting the next step started. So we have, we were asking for the town's assistance in providing an area that is safe, an area that is central, and an area that is accessible. We believe that this dog park needs to be a beacon for the rest of the town as a place of health, as a place of some socialization, both for the canine community, but especially for the residents of Cardston. This is an outdoor area and especially this year, we've seen the need for a place where people can gather that's safe and a place where they can see other people. My huge concern this year has been for those elderly people, those who are not able to get out and walk their dogs the way that some of us can. They, a lot of them have a support dog or a pet that might be smaller and they need a place to run as well. So this is a way for those elderly people, those with mobility issues, to get out, to meet their community and to not feel so shut in. So what we're asking is for the location to be approved from the town, somewhere central like we talked about. We need it fenced appropriately for the safety of all involved, even those who are not wanting to be in that park. And then we've provided with your paper in front of you, I guess, online, you can see the, I'm kind of skipping down to our community involvement. So we have, through the town and we appreciate the work that they've done for us, started a fund for the dog park to show some interest. As of right now, we are looking at about forty-one hundred dollars in the past two months that we have been able to procure. That's just in two months of asking people. With COVID, it's been pretty difficult for us to go door-to-door or to do more than kind of a social media blitz. We plan to do more as we can, once things kind of open up again a little bit more. But at this point, in two months, we have raised that forty-one hundred dollars. So we are willing to continue to fundraise for whatever needs to be done. We are willing to be the hands that keep it clean. We are willing to be the voice and the advocate. So we want to work with the town in making this a very, very positive experience for the entire community. As for our proposed locations, those are soft, obviously. We are looking at the places that we think are most beneficial for all. That includes appropriate parking, that includes places that perhaps have the ability in the future of expansion. And this, this dog park to, to the majority of us on this committee, isn't a stagnant decision. To us, this is something we want to continue to beautify. We want to continue to promote. If, if time and usage allows, we would love to expand it. We would love to make this into a park that is an attraction, that being an attraction for not just the community members, but especially those that are going by. We know of campsites and websites that will put available dog parks on their websites so that campers and travelers know there's a spot that's safe for their animal. So we've kind of tried to pick places that we think have that beautification ability, places that are central, places that have the ability for accessibility and we think that work well for the dogs. We recognize there's going to be some community members that would not be pleased with having a dog park in town. Recognizing that, we want to make as many people happy as possible. We didn't want to put it on someone's backyard. However, some of these locations are within some residential areas. And after doing some research as a committee, we have learned that having the park near your home is actually a benefit to resale in your home, to be able to say, we back onto a park. That being said, we have tried to procure some testimonials from people in other towns that have a dog park adjacent to their homes. Unfortunately, with COVID, that again requires us to do some face-to-face talks and we are willing to do that once it's a little bit safer. So we do recognize that there are some people that may be putting up a little bit more of a, a break on that. But we believe that once they see how this can be beautiful, once they see how this can be a charming location and just another beautiful park in town, I think that their, their hearts will change a little bit.
So where is it?
No, you can't speak. I'm just kidding.
(laughing) I was a little realize I'm not exactly.
She's usually in charge. That's why she's having a hard time.
She's having a hard time with that.
Yeah, that's okay.
So Debbie, you say you have ideas of a location. You talked about near campground. You talked about near a residential area. So whereabouts do you have that in mind?
On our proposed locations, these are just ideas. We are willing to work with the town and try to discuss what would work best for everyone. Our first and preferred location of choice is up what we call on the West Creek Drive. So there's the West Creek Drive and there's a ninety-degree angle. That's a very flat location. Buildings cannot be put on that because of the erosion. That park area could use some beautiful trees, could use some park, could use some benches. We like that location because although it does affect only four homes that will look adjacent onto it, it does overlook the beautiful creek. It has some, it does have that ability for growth like we've talked about. So even if we have, you know, a certain plot and eventually in the future, we can go down the hill to maybe the walking trail, et cetera. We like that it's parked, it's got the parking all along the road there for those who need to park. And like I said, it's close to that trail for those of us who do like to walk the dogs to get to the location. So that was our first proposed location. Our second proposed location is on the land actually just outside of your home. So across from the street of you, there is that embankment that goes down towards the provincial building and kind of that area, there's some flat areas that would work well for smaller dogs and those with the accessibility needs. And then for those of us like me who has very big dogs, I would love to run them up and down a hill because then they sleep at night. So that is kind of another location that we've proposed. So that's kind of the provincial hill kind of location that we call it. And the other locations are along the creek. There's quite a few that we've kind of said, this one would be great, this one would be great, this one would be great, recognizing that those ones don't necessarily have the capability as the other ones do of expansion. However, they're, they're a lot less dependent on the community's agreement as far as the housing goes. So it's already part of the park. It doesn't benefit anybody specifically to say, now I live on the park, but it is a location that's already on that walking trail. There's a few of those that we've circled as suggestions.
So when you mentioned that you could get testimonial, I'm kind of interested about that kind of idea because I've never been near a dog park, so I have no idea what the noise level is. I would imagine to me, there's possibly more the noise of the barking of dogs rather than anything else that would be really an impediment to, to residents. I don't know.
So we would expect the park to be closed at certain hours, just like any park would be. We, we would not want, you know, this to be a twenty-four-hour park at all. So to my vision and to parks that I have frequented, there may be an occasional scrappy dog moment where they are barking. But in general, how much are you hearing dogs bark right now that are actually out on a walk? Most of the time, they're not barking at each other. They're playing, they're happy. It's the dogs that are locked in their yard that are barking. It's the dogs that are tired and bored that are barking. You take them to a dog park, they may bark out of excitement, but that's during the day hours and, and that is a happy bark. It's not a dangerous and it's not incessant. Those owners, in general, those who use a dog park have a heightened sense of community responsibility. They recognize that this is an honor to have your dog off-leash. The bylaws of town restrict off-leash dogs and yet we see them all the time. And I know that it has been something that has been brought up to the town. I know that it's something that people have put on social media. I got bit by this dog. This dog was on a walk. This owner wasn't doing these. I think by being able to provide them with a location that we can say, hey, I know we like to have our dogs off-leash. This is where it's appropriate. And those who can't follow that, then we would expect that, you know, that some, something needs to be done a little bit easier because at that point, they're, they're totally negating the fact that we've provided exactly what they're asking for. So the noise level, in my opinion, and having been through many dog parks, I used to live in Calgary and we did frequent a dog park, I didn't notice. What I noticed was joyful people congregating, pets meeting each other, socialization. As for, you know, barking, I find more barking from someone's backyard myself.
Counselor Court.
Number one, I do like the idea behind a dog park. Number two, the locations where we're going to hear it, where everybody wants to go on bus and we're going to hear the, the noise. I've already heard some already. Just a question and I really don't know the answer. I have a fifteen-pound dog. Who patrols a dog park if there's a hundred and fifty-pound dog besides he likes my fifteen-pound dog?
We are, we are hoping that once we.
That does me a little bit nervous.
No, that's okay. We are hoping once this has got a little bit more traction, that we will provide a fenced area for smaller dogs. So those who do have a smaller dog are not being trampled by a Saint Bernard like mine, recognizing. And those people who maybe their dog is more shy, they might want to be in, in the smaller fenced area, that kind of thing. So we do anticipate a smaller blocked-off location for smaller dogs.
Just one other question. I don't know if you answered or not. Have you talked to anybody particular in that Area One that you like so much up there by West Creek Drive?
I have not spoken to that because I don't want to concern people prior to this conversation.
They're concerned already.
Right. But I'm saying, I'm saying it's not really my duty to do that at this point, to assume that that would be a location to stress people out for noise.
Right. Well, there's been that assumption made. Their biggest concern is parking and noise, but again.
It's daytime.
That's what I heard. But, but again, I, I totally, I'm on board with, with it somewhere.
Counselor Silk.
Couple of questions. So how do you anticipate dealing with or having the town deal with the NIMBY factor? Because wherever you put it, no one's going to want it in their backyard.
Pardon me for saying, but I disagree. Not everybody wouldn't want it in their backyard. I think that having a hundred and fifty members of our community on this committee through social media is a testament to a hundred and fifty people who would own a dog or more that want this to happen.
Or the other thirty-seven hundred and fifty people?
Maybe not be on Facebook. Maybe they don't know that this is happening. Maybe, I, I can't, I can't speak for others to say whether they want or don't want a dog park. What I can speak for is there's two thousand or four thousand dollars in a bank account from local citizens who want this in the past two months only.
Keep going.
Second question. You've said that you want the town to provide fencing, waste receptacles, and to continue the maintenance of the grass, the fencing and trash removal.
Correct. It would be our, our request to have the fencing done through the town so that we recognize that it's been done appropriately. We will, we have people who have offered to do that work in kind for us. So we would work with the town if that was something that was allowed. We would also, the waste receptacles, of course, need to be there. We want something that is clean and we want a few of those there. As for all the other beautification parts, we would hope to do that on our own. We're not asking for the, for the park benches and the trails and all those kind of things that would come as part of our vision. So just the fencing. Now, as far as maintenance and grass grows, those places that we're talking about have already been maintained in some way. So it wouldn't really affect the maintenance. We would just like that to continue.
Except that when it's fenced, it's hard to get a tractor, mower, et cetera, et cetera, inside there.
Not impossible.
So it's not impossible. It's difficult. You want it in a semi-central location rather than on the outskirts of town, which you deem to be safer. Why is it safer rather than being, say, at the Agro Dome?
Public eye. This is a place where I think that we do want to have people feeling safe to come. We do want it to be a congregating area. We do want it to be a place where I can meet neighbors from the other side of town. I have a Saint Bernard. There's no way I'm going to be able to walk this nine-year-old Saint Bernard all the way to the Agro Dome from my west-side home, then let him play and walk him all the way back. And I guarantee you, I am not putting him in my vehicle. So we want something where every size of dog and every type of person, every size of person, has the same accessibility. You put it on one side of town and you're alienating many people on the other side.
I appreciate your enthusiasm, but I'm still skeptical that there aren't going to be people who, I recognize you got a hundred and fifty, but I think there's a number that would be opposed to having it.
What number would you like to see us have in our group?
I don't know. My expectation is, are you wanting the town staff to canvass all those people in those selected locations?
No, no, we are willing to do all the footwork. It's just been a matter of timing. I don't think it's appropriate to do too much footwork ahead of time and put the egg or the horse before the cart. So that kind of thing hasn't happened officially at this point. We're willing to do all the, all the legwork. We just haven't without having more of the steps in place.
Okay. So Counselor Brown, Counselor Court, Counselor Bengry.
I just have a couple of questions. I know the answer because we've talked, but I think it's important for council too. So we've got just under four thousand people in the town of Cardston. So if we were to mirror another community, say Claire's Home, do they have dog parks there?
They do have a dog park in Claire's Home.
One or two?
They have two. You know the answer of the story?
They have two.
Yeah, okay.
So this is an unheard of, that a community of our size to have a dog park, they're all over.
They are all over. Tabor has a great dog park and it's beautiful. I recognize they're a bigger town, but yes, Claire's Home is the closest one to us that also does have.
And it's about the same size. The other question was, as far as your wants and wants and wants of the town, council loves it when people come forward and say, look, we've made four thousand dollars. We're happy to keep going. Your expectation isn't to put all of the financial burden on the town of Cardston and the taxpayers. Your goal is, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's my understanding that your goal is to do fundraising for a good fence. Like you said, we, we don't want liability. If we're going to build a dog park, we want to build it properly, is my understanding from what the both of you have said to me, that you don't want to just Joe Blow to slap a fence up, a snow fence and call it good because then we have so many other problems. So that four thousand dollars you're looking at putting towards fencing is my understanding?
Yes.
And whatever else is needed?
And, and continuing.
Correct.
Yeah, exactly. And we know fencing is going to be more than four thousand dollars. But everything we're making, we want to give to the town, to say, we're willing to continue to do this. We have other people who have given us in-kind donations where we've talked about doing an, an online auction. We're looking at timing. Some of these things, you know, it's Christmas, that's not the time. When COVID kind of went crazy again, it's not the time. But we do have people who are still continuing to give us donations, either in-kind or monetary. We have talked to many business owners who are also going to get on board, but again, it comes down to fiscal years.
And part B, sorry. And part B to my question is you also have the support of Ryan Merkley, who's our vet here in town, who is cautious and knows a lot about animals and how they play together and work together. And he's been a huge supporter of this group, is my understanding.
Yes.
And he even did a seminar for you guys.
He did.
Is my understanding.
I hope you managed to catch it. If you didn't, it's still online. It's fantastic through the FCS. And he does talk about how this dog park community can influence positively families. It's not just about the dogs and it's not just about dog owners.
Thank you.
My question's been answered.
Thank you. Counselor Bengry.
Debbie, I've seen a lot of dog parks. My question to you is if you have two forty-pound dogs, one being a German Shepherd and another being a whatever, and they decide to make puppies, but one of the owner doesn't want that to happen, so he gets involved and he gets part of his face tore off.
Got a big stick.
Who is liable and who, who is, who covers the liability cost?
Who covers the liability on the sidewalk? At this point, my question goes back to the town. If that happened on my front yard of two dog owners, who's liable at that point? Because I do not want the town to be liable for any of this. I want the dog owners who show responsibility for them to be liable for their dog. If my dog attacked any dog, I am liable for that dog. Same as, as people. We have bylaws. If that dog is going to bite a person, there are bylaws that, that hold that owner and the dog responsible. I would expect nothing different in a park or outside of one.
Mayor and then Counselor Brown.
To go back to other costs, do you have any estimate of the amount of money you figure out you will need to have proper fencing put, even imagining that the town was helping with the labor?
It would depend on obviously size that we were granted. We are looking at about twenty-seven dollars per, per foot.
Twenty-seven dollars?
Is it chain link fence?
Or was it seventeen? Chain link, yes, absolutely, chain link. Six feet, oh seventeen, sorry. I knew it had a seven. That's close. Seventeen dollars a square foot or a linear foot and we would expect it to be six feet high.
Counselor Brown.
Thank you. So just to kind of answer, Counselor Bengry, he bought, he brought up the fact of, you know.
Liability.
Liability. But I, I think it's, it's like any park that we have in the town of Cardston. If my son jumps your son while they're playing on the teeter totter, it's one of those enter at own risks, right? And obviously, we would have signs up, just like we do with COVID restrictions everywhere. Enter at own risk. We would do the due diligence. I mean, to me, it just seems like it's the same thing, whether it's a dog park or a dog or kids at a park. You have to enter at your own risk and be responsible as parents and dog owners. I feel like that's the same.
I would hope we could put up some signage that would have also a little bit of dog etiquette. You know, everybody knows to pick up after your dog, but sometimes people need some reminding. You know, we do plan on having dog bags available, but like I said, we do want the garbages to be picked up.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor.
I just have another question. You mentioned that you have right now in your community a hundred and fifty people. Can you give me a sense, are those people from the town?
Yes.
Is that strictly from the town?
I can't, yeah, let's, I can't go through all a hundred and fifty right now, but as far as I have seen, it is probably a hundred and thirty from town. There are a few outlying community residents where it wouldn't be just town of Cardston. There's quite a few people from Etna, the surrounding communities that way. I do know of one or two from Lethbridge who, you know, come and visit their families here that are excited about that prospect of this as well. So it's not limited to those who live in Cardston. Community, to me, is more than just the residents here.
No, I'm just curious.
Yeah.
Because we have entered in an agreement regarding Parkton Rec with the county. So I was curious to know what was the proportion of people from the county that might be in your, in your group.
I could look that up and get back to you, but I can't give that off the top of my head right now.
Amen. Is every source of funding is a good place?
Right.
The county included.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your information.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Schaefer, way in the back there, if you want to come up, do you want to?
Can I, can I preface this a bit?
Sure.
I haven't had a chance to visit with you about it. This actually just came about yesterday. So Mr. Schaefer and I met yesterday with Brandon Jensen and a gentleman named Mark Casagawa, who's an engineer. And one thing that came from that meeting was it, it was apparent, and I, and I think Mr. Schaefer would agree, it was apparent that we're not clear on the roles of each party as this goes forward. And what we're doing is we're frustrating each other. And so what I'm hoping we can do tonight here for a minute is, and it's a bit unorthodox maybe in how we do it, is I, I actually, I didn't have a lot of time today between different meetings, but I tried to put together a few questions that I thought kind of stemmed from our meeting yesterday that would be good for us to talk through and keep us moving forward. And hopefully, we may not be able to answer them all tonight, but we could, I could give my opinion from administration's point of view and then it would give Mr. Schaefer a chance to answer from his point of view. And then we can go back and forth a little bit and hopefully come to some conclusion. You don't have this in your background or I was, I was literally working on it until twenty minutes before the meeting when I had some thoughts throughout the day. But if, if that works for you, if you don't mind, I could start with just some kind of preamble from my point of view only. And I, I bring this up because with the intention of trying to come to some resolve on how this is moving forward. So I'll preface also that it's probably a bit of an uncomfortable conversation in some parts because I think we got to get some stuff sorted out because right now, we're just frustrating each other. And we had a frustrating meeting to some degree yesterday. And so you can kind of act as a bit of a, just to kind of a neutral party here to kind of understand both perspectives and maybe we can come to some conclusion. I don't have any foregone conclusions in this necessarily, but I thought maybe that was a way we could keep it moving forward than just kind of opening it up and talking about how it was going.
Sure. Everybody comfortable with that?
Yep.
We're good?
Gib, are you, I haven't had a chance to talk to you on this, so you're good with that?
Well, you got with me tonight is a headache, so.
All right. I'll try not to add to it too much.
I don't have a sore throat. I don't have.
Describe all other symptoms, Gib.
Good.
Okay. So, so thank you, counsel. And I, I've written down a lot of my thoughts as I had them throughout the day, but the intent of the questions here is to help determine the role of Mr. Schaefer or the Pickleball Association. I use them together in this context. So I just said the association in the rest of my remarks. And the town council, town administration, the comments are intended to clarify the role of the association in town in this project. And they largely come from our meeting yesterday, that we had yesterday morning. So I wanted to start first and just talk about kind of where we are today in trying to conclude this idea of the conceptual drawings and the preliminary pricing and those pieces. And by the way, I will say, this is the one part of our meeting I think we made great strides yesterday. And I think we've come to a pretty good end. It's going to get us where we need to go and, and pretty short order on that. But, but I think there's been some confusion and frustration to get the conceptual drawings done. And our volunteers so far have done great work in getting that concept on paper. So we know roughly what we want in the place and what needs to be in there and the square footage we need to get there. The project's at a point where it needs to be refined a bit to accommodate the operational side of it. So what makes sense operationally versus conceptually? What is compliant with code? And that has some big implications and, and Gib can probably speak to that a bit. Depending on our occupancy, it greatly enhances some of the costs in certain areas. So I have to be really cautious around that piece. The site layout, code compliance, it needs to get to a point of, a point of accuracy where it can be used for public consultation, which doesn't mean it's a hundred percent, but it's, it's somewhere close to where we think it's going. So my first question I, I had to pose to get kind of both parties' thoughts on this matter is, what is the role of the association? And we're talking about the Pickleball Association, Mr. Schaefer, and the town in getting the conceptual drawings prepared? Because I think when I, after I met with Gib yesterday, we're, we're going parallel down the same track, but we're expending, we're both doing work on this that isn't necessarily complimentary. And then we run into conflict, right? And so I wanted to have initially, I think that's a good place to start is, what do we see from the? And so I wanted to have initially, I think that's a good place to start, is what do we see from the association's point of view and then from the town's on the role of getting this concept to the public? If that's a fair, fair place to start.
Sure. Go ahead, Mayor.
Okay. I appreciate, Gabe, all the work and efforts you have put together. But my concern always has been that we need to define the roles of the town. Your role in, in view of your relationship with Brandon and of the engineers that you have asked to kind of look at that conceptual idea and put some kind of dollar to it, the code, et cetera. So for me, and I have said that at many meetings around this table, I really feel it's imperative that now we have a good definition of people's, people's role in that project. Because it seems to me that you want to take the lead, but also the ability to expand the money with the moving forward. When I don't see that as being possibly where counsel wants to go. I could be totally wrong. I'm just speaking of myself here. Because in other meetings, what we understood is that Brandon, once he has a quote, would kind of be the lead on that project, moving forward toward construction, if that's where we're going, working with you. And because you have a lot of people that can help with many other things that Brandon does not have the knowledge that you have at this point. And I also think that because the money for this project is taxpayer money that we have put in a budget, the million dollar has to stay under the control of the town solely. It cannot be given to a third party liberally. I, I cannot see that happening, honestly. But that's my vision, is maybe not the vision of counsel. So that's all what I need to say.
Go ahead, Counselor.
Let me do it.
Oh, go ahead.
Answer like what I think as far, never once in coming here have I asked that the town would write a check for a million dollars to me. I mean, does anybody here ever remember me saying that I did not ask for a million dollars? In the past, we have, I've worked on two separate projects now. And one was with Atna Irrigation District, which we put irrigation in our community in Etna. And so we approached, you know, the different levels of, you know, government, meaning Atna Irrigation is basically the same as a town council here. They have monies that is given to them by the government. They also have monies that they raise through, as if you want to call it taxes. And so we entered into an agreement with them. And I guess we got the horse, oops, sorry, the horse before the, or after the cart, the cart before the horse. We're still waiting for that agreement to be signed, but that everything is done, okay, that we need to do. We've, we've satisfied Atna Irrigation. And so how that worked is when we would do a specific part of the project, we turned a bill in, they released funds for us. And you could send Brandon over to check it and say, yes, this is all done, write a check, we pay the contractor. So there, by doing something like that, then the town has all the control of the funds. There are no monies going to be put out that the town hasn't already approved. And the funds are sitting there. We give you invoices, our people, either you write the check to us, which would be the best way to do it, and we write the check to them, or however you want to do it. That's what we did with Atna Irrigation. We just turned our bills in, ended the contract, they write us another check, we're done with it. So that being said, is, and I started to write something else, but I forgot what that was. But that being said, the money will always be controlled by the town.
I just, okay, go ahead, Mayor.
Just as a follow-up question then.
Okay.
So you said in your Etna project, you were then the manager, there was, there was contracting out the portions of the project.
Yeah.
Okay, and I think at this point, it is probably from what we spoke at this table, the desire of the town to be the general contractor and to have the portions and part looked after through proper contracting or through proper bidding.
Can I answer that for you as well?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Okay, in talking with Ryan Vadney, who is there, you know, basically the same thing, you know, he runs, he runs the books, he does everything for Atna Irrigation. He said that had they put this, had they taken control of the project, that project would have cost them two to three times more than what we were able to do it as an association in Etna. I think you'll find the same problem if you take that and decide, okay, we want to, you know, you're going to be under, under the same obligations that Atna Irrigation was, that they would have to put it out to tender. It has to be engineered and designed, which we had that conversation yesterday, Jeff and I, with, with Hasagawa's. And he said it would probably run you about, he, he threw a number out there, but he said close to $200,000 just for drawings and just what he's going to do for us, where he can bypass a lot of those things if we were to do a, you know, something like this. Because you're going to be forced to have it tendered out. It will have, everything, all the drawings, everything will have to be done, that they won't allow me to do the heat loss on it or Ron Scow to do, you know, to design the electrical. It'll all have to be done with an engineer stamp. It'll have to be, they will come out, they will actually have a site visit with, you know, ten or whatever amount of contractors that you may bring into this project. And that's what drives it up, you know? And what we're trying to do is cut the costs on this building. Because we can, we can drive the costs up, you know, another half a million to, you know, $750,000 and do the process you're talking about. So if that's the way you want to go, fine, I can step back and you just do, you know, your process, whatever you want to do. And get, get somebody in to design the building, get someone in to, you know, because all of that guaranteed will cost you money. What I have done up to this point is probably, I'm going to say thirty or so thousand dollars worth of work to design. And I've just had, if you hired an engineer, okay? I can't put a stamp on mine, but Hasagawa will stamp that drawing that I put, that I drew or had Dave Burrows draw. Okay? But if you turn that back to Hasagawa, you're going to get charged, because now it's going to be about a $15,000 bill just to draw them up. And Hasagawa's bill on the total project for everything we need to have done right now is thirty, about $39,000, about $40,000. You're going to bounce that up to close to 200,000 to go the direction that you're talking about going. So it's your choice, whatever you want to do, I'm fine. I'd just like to see a building, however you build it, that's, that's fine with me.
Well, I think it's a choice of counsel, so that will be.
Yeah, exactly, but you said that you thought it was the agreement of the council when you started.
Yeah.
So I say the same thing to counsel, that's your choice. If you want to drive this building up, go whatever direction you want to go, it doesn't matter to me. I'm ready to step back anytime.
Okay.
Counselor, Counselor Brown and Counselor Selk.
So this is kind of a Jeff question too. So in previous projects, like when we built our soccer field, we had an MOU, did we not?
I had just come on with the town then, so I wasn't involved in like meeting up to that.
I'm just, so I guess my question would be this, let's tweak it. So we have an MOU in place with the money that we have set aside to build our golf course new clubhouse.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
Right, so we had that MOU.
Yeah.
It's been signed, is my understanding, council approved it?
It's not signed.
Okay, but it was approved.
Yeah.
So, so the, the golf course committee, whatever.
Lee Creek Association.
Thank you. Them, okay. So they were, they are going to be helping with the getting of funds and doing those things. And also, are they having anything to do with the design of the building?
If I might.
Yeah, you bet.
Mr. Chairman, the, the extent of the MOU is, and this is agreed to by the association, that their involvement is to prepare conceptual designs for the approval of council.
Yes.
Get quotes and to fundraise. And then at the end of the fundraising stage, that, that is done. That's it. And then the town agreed that we would take the project on. And they would also, I think, I think we have a clause that, they're about helping coordinate volunteers and some of that stuff too. That we would assume a lot of the construct, we would consume all of the construction liabilities, assume, I should say, the construction liabilities and those types of things as the project move forward. Now, I'm not suggesting that particularly is what, they don't all have to be the same. But yes, if, if the end goal here was to define that role a little better, that would be great.
Well, because it's my understanding, from what I'm hearing, it would be ideal to have an MOU in place so that Mr. Schaefer can know exactly where things stand. So my second question then would be, explain to me, I wasn't at this meeting yesterday, I don't know about this meeting. So when I pitched to Westman School Division last week, we gave them the drawings, we gave them the schematics-ish, we gave them the floor plan, all of those things, the costs and all of those things. So now this group, Hasagawa, Hasagawa that you met with, their engineering firm. And so they, you met with them and they looked at these specs, is that right? And they, they are going to build us this, like, can you fill this in?
That's not the one you brought to the meeting. You haven't seen this before, and I'd add, yeah, so I prefer to put that for me for a minute. But I don't have the one you brought to the meeting yet.
Is it this one?
No.
No.
Oh, it's a different one.
It's a quote.
Oh, okay, so tell me what, Hasagawa, sorry, I don't know this, so tell me.
You want me to go first, do you want to go?
Hasagawa's going to do everything that he would do on a building of this size for about $40,000. If we turn it over to him, as counsel is talking about, you can raise that to close to $200,000.
But, sorry, if I can just finish that. So to, to, for the $40,000, Gabe, that gives us what?
Okay, it gives you geotech, that's what I needed it for, because it lists off about five different things.
Okay.
Gives us all the mechanicals, drawings and whatnot in there, the structural drawings, the foundation.
But is that not what we need to pick for our open house?
No.
Or for our, to let people know?
Nobody is going to care.
Okay.
That's all in the background.
So this is what we need for the open house essentially?
You need the structural draw, or the, the drawings that Jeff asked him to draw yesterday. That's what you need.
Jeff?
Hold on a second.
No, well, so my question.
Just trying to answer my question.
Yeah, sorry, Counsel Selk.
I didn't get an answer though.
I, I need, I need to come back to that. Let me come back to it.
Okay, just to clarify something, your understanding, Mayor, is not necessarily what all the rest of us think.
Well, I keep on saying, is my understanding.
But you're also extending it to all the rest of us, so.
Okay, well, fair enough, we can always discuss that.
All right. Second thing is that we keep going back to the soccer park, but nobody can give us a solid answer, because that wasn't something that was done strictly by the town taking it over and doing it. So whatever that formula was, I want to know why we can't do that again. Is there, was that a one and done? Because if not, then administration could probably do some homework on how that was done and why we can't do it again.
I'm not suggesting for minimum, can't do it again.
Then why haven't we?
Because it's more complicated than that, Counselor. And I, I'm frustrated with this, because I know we can't have any discussion about this without getting angry. And I'm getting frustrated with it. One of the difficulties we have here is, I didn't know Mark Hasagawa was coming to the meeting yesterday. We thought we were just meeting with Gabe. And he's the third engineer now we've introduced on the project, and we had no idea who they were. So we started this project with Paul Aldridge, and we've had a couple conversations with him. And then last week, we were told to run things through Wild Brothers, because they were going to do the conceptual drawings. And then yesterday, we were introduced to Mark Hasagawa, who now is all of a sudden now unseen. So we're duplicating a lot of work here, and that's why I'm saying we're going down parallel paths. We're trying to all get to the same end. But administratively, Brandon's frustrated, I'm frustrated, because we keep starting over. So let me speak to the, the three levels of kind of drawings we have here. And I don't have, I wish, where do I have that one, Gabe? The one that Mark brought, I should have more if I have it really handy. So.
That agreement?
Yeah, that Mark did.
Well, I've got it here.
Oh, okay.
I just thought if you had paper there, it'd save me looking it up.
Sorry.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
How do we get Wild Brothers involved in this? Because I don't think any of us said anything about that.
None of us have said anything about anybody so far. It's just when we were working on things, then Gabe would call Brandon and say, send this to Wild Brothers to do 3D drawings.
No, I never once said that.
I, I'm like positive I have text messages to Brandon for you saying send it to Wild Brothers.
This is the first time I've heard of Wild Brothers. And that's why I say, we're not on the same track, we're on a track here and a track here. If we're on the same track, we would be knowing what left hand's doing and the right hand's doing.
So, so with the drawings, we can, we have a couple of ways you can approach it. So if we want to, one of the things I don't think is a foregone conclusion is that if we put it to tender, it comes in hundreds of thousands of dollars higher. I actually don't think that's a foregone conclusion. There's no reason, and we'll use, oh, for heaven's sake, Scow, Gabe, electrician you've talked to.
Ron.
Ron.
Thank you. No, sorry, I lost that. There's no reason a Ron Scow can't bid on that project with the price he wants to do as a community member with giving other volunteer help and putting that price in. There's nothing prohibiting him from doing that.
Just sent that to you.
And then, but, but one of the problems is, is that you as a, as a council in a municipality, you have obligations over certain thresholds to find out and ensure that you're getting a market value bid. You're getting a competitive bid. And there isn't a way to do that unless you put it out. That's what's difficult. Now, we can make, and I would agree a hundred percent with Gabe, that some of those prices we have so far are well below market value. But no, no debate there, for sure they are. So as long as we can get those verified and, you know, we're pretty confident that that will come in under market value and we can proceed with those guys, and that's all good. Now, I'm going way back to soccer park, we're talking twelve years ago?
Yeah, twelve years, about thirteen.
Yeah, so it's, it's been a little bit.
Yeah.
So that was largely, the, the big pieces of that puzzle came from public sector. So the county, for example.
Correct.
Was a big piece of that puzzle, doing, doing the earth moving. That was a huge piece of it.
Biggest.
And, and then you had got quotes on some of the other components. But dollar wise, I don't, what was the total dollar on that, do you remember?
I thought, no, I thought it was over a million.
I don't quite remember on that one.
But when we did get, sorry, if I can answer. When we did get quotes on it though, it was like, you know, Ken Wild said he would do our concrete and, and.
We did the plumbing.
Sorry?
We did the plumbing.
Yeah, you guys did the plumbing, like we had our local guys that just stepped in. I don't know if we put bids out, I, like, I don't.
Yeah.
That wasn't, I was the soccer mom doing the fundraising and laying the sod and raking. I wasn't the one that was, so I, I don't have that information.
Yeah.
But I'm just, I, I just thought this is a similar, I mean, I get it, it's a bigger, but I just, I felt in what that MOU looked like, I felt like it could possibly work here, if in fact there was one.
So we've jumped a little bit away from just getting about conceptual drawings, but let's go down a story a little bit more. I think from a legislative perspective, let's talk about that. There are a couple of options. One is, is that you have a volunteer group like the association, who's going to build a, a project. So they have a, a goal for a project, in this case, it's this rec center. And the town makes a donation to them, and they commence to build a project. Now, that's probably. And they commence to build a project. Now, that's probably, and, and, and I know lawyers would argue this a little differently, but it's probably a reasonably, well, with some precautions, it's a reasonably safe path to do without being challenged under the legislation. Where the risk is for communities is, let's say we use XYZ, uh, um, electrician. And ABC electrician says, this is a huge project in my community, I didn't even get a chance to bid on it. What's going on here? Why wasn't I given a chance to bid on the project? And that's where you start to run into risk. And I can't speak to the extent of the risk, but that's, that's part of the risk behind the legislation. Is you're trying to make sure you don't have complaints from others who could have had the opportunity to work on the project. Now, if the contractor you want to do is doing it for below market, well, then the other guy probably didn't want it anyway. You know, why, why would he want to do it for no profitable profit, right? So that is a model that can be looked at, and we've gotta look at that a little closer if we wanna go down that road, but there's risk to the community in that. And part of that risk is, if we say, and we'll say the pickleball association, yeah, go ahead, we're gonna give you a, a donation of a million dollars to build this facility. There, there's still a lot of those liability type risks around this, and we have no, we have no, uh, we're exposed a lot on the back end of the project. And what I mean is, the project gets two thirds of the way done, and it's out of money. And you couldn't, I couldn't get a performance bond from the pickleball association to complete it for a set dollar, that's not gonna happen. Or those types of things, and then who's picking up the slack? Because when you, and, and I'm actually not on, I, I would agree with Gib, I don't think trying to put out a bid for a general contractor is the way to go here. I think, I think it runs the price up way too fast. But they're also the ones absorbing all of the risk. They're absorbing all the WCB risk, all the safety risk, all the performance contract bond risk, all that stuff, if they're a general in doing that. But I don't think we should go down that road, because I agree, it adds a whole bunch. I think we can work with contractors. We just have to be mindful of the thresholds that we're legally obligated to put out. That's all. And, um, and we just have to work through that case by case. So, I haven't examined Hasagawa's proposal too much from yesterday, but essentially it was, I, I wanna say, Gib, similar to Paul's, that it was.
Especially a little more far reaching than Paul's.
Okay, okay. But I didn't understand, I, I, I'm fine to be corrected here, I did not understand that that proposal from Hasagawa yesterday gave us construction blueprints at the end of that project. I didn't understand that's what it ended with.
Um, just hang on a second, I'll, I'll, I'll read, I'll read out exactly.
Because that's where Mark thought it was gonna get obviously more expensive at that point, when they have to bring in HVAC engineers and electrical engineers, et cetera.
Here's what's, here's what's included with a dollar figure beside it. And I won't give the dollar figure, but professional coordination. So that means that he is the engineer that will be over all of the other engineers that will come on site. So he's the one that the buck stops at. Architectural, architectural services, which in reality, I think could have included some of these drawings that we were doing the other, you know, that we agreed on, but not sure. Geotechnical services, I will give you that price right there. Forty-five hundred dollars, that's in-house, he's doing that in-house, okay? Uh, I did get one, uh, estimate on, actually two estimates. One was for forty, uh, forty some thousand dollars. I mean, we are ten percent of what another engineer would have charged us. Electrical engineering, which is, um, Ron's, okay, end of the, end of the, uh, contract. He is going to go through that. He is expecting that Ron will draft up, get all the lighting, which we can do that through our, our suppliers. By sending the plan off, they will design the plan for us, send it back to Ron, say this is what you need for equipment. We do it all the time. And so Hasagawa will take that, review it, and stamp it. And the same thing with the mechanical engineering, which is the, the heating, the cooling in the building, okay, and the, and the plumbing. So anything inside the building is all, Hasagawa stamps it, that it will function the way it's supposed to function. Once we get outside the building, we're hoping that Brandon is going to be able to, you know, that your town employee will design the, the storm sewer and the whatever that needs to be happening out there. Another thing that wasn't included, and this is why I say it wasn't included, was the, uh, energy code review that we didn't have. He would have to, um, Paul would have had to done that. And I could be mistaken on that as well. But the energy code is something that's just brand new in Alberta, and you have to do that so that you meet a certain uh, standard of heating and cooling within your building. So that's what is included there. And his total price was thirty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars, and that was with GST. So thirty-eight thousand bucks. That's what he was doing it for. My last thing, I said to Mark, uh, before I hung up, I said, remember this is a community project. Mark, uh, and the, you know, it was raised, uh, uh, from Jeff that, why are we not using local guys? And Price tells me, and, and Mark Hasagawa is a local guy. He may live in, in Raymond or McGrath, I don't even know, do you remember where he lives? Okay, so he lives in Raymond, but I've dealt with Hasagawa Engineering for probably thirty years. Um, they're a reputable firm. And he's gonna do a good job. And he's not gonna get in our way. And I, I see some of the other engineers that I've talked to, they will get in our way, and they will drive the cost up. And, and I've seen it, you know, just from the pricing that I see, that Mark has given us a great deal on here. And to move forward with Mark, it'd be a great thing.
So councillor Barnes, please.
The question I have is to, to Jeff on this, and, um, you know, in the day and age we have here with the legislation, lots of changes have been happening over the past six or seven years. With this type of arrangement that we're talking about, keeping it local in-house, would it pass the municipal government act guidelines now, Jeff?
It's a big depends. Um, what I would, what we'll probably end up doing, councillor, is we'd have a session with Sean Ward or some lawyer that would speak with. Brandon and I have met with him, and, and obviously, he, he would like to explain the risk of that process to councillor because you, you are skirting two different federal legislation acts, right? So, uh, the free trade agreements and, and intergovernmental agreements. But, I think, I've always thought there was a way forward. I do wanna, I, I've only met Mark just for an hour and forty-five minutes yesterday, but, uh, no, uh, the administration isn't debating the competency of their firm or their ability to do any of this, that's, that's not an issue at all. Uh, Mark is actually, uh, quite a good, I was quite impressed with him yesterday. Um, so councillor Barnes, to your question, it depends. And we're gonna have to do, um, we're just gonna have to work through that a little bit to see, to see. Because there are thresholds, for example, for any good in service, we purchase over seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, or if we're doing a general contract, if it was over two hundred thousand, it has to go out in Alberta, Saskatchewan, and BC for bid.
Right.
That, that's the threshold in, in there. But, and the other thing you don't wanna do is to part everything out to seventy-four thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollar contracts, because now just you're obviously skirting the legislation. That's just obvious. But it, you know, we may be able to find that most of those components don't exceed the threshold. I mean, the building does, for example. I don't see a way around that necessarily. The building, between the building and its, uh, uh, assembly is about four hundred and something thousand, I think, that's a roughly close number uh, to, to get it and put it up. So there's, there's a very blatant threshold that we have to figure out how to manage. Because you can't really part that out and say, send us half of it now and half of it later, right? You gotta deal with it. Um, and so, so we'll just, we'd have to work through that a little bit.
Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Gib, my question is not to undermine what you have done with hiring that engineer. But is to understand the process.
Did not hire him. I didn't, I didn't hire him, I didn't, so there's no undermining. I did not hire Hasagawa. Jeff hired him. I brought him on so that we can answer questions. That's all he was here for, was questions only yesterday. Did you not hire him?
Did we get?
We haven't done it yet, no. Him and I talked this afternoon.
Yeah.
But I don't have his proposal.
Okay, so.
So far it's not costing us anything.
He said he sent it to you, because I've talked.
Yeah, we have to amend a couple things, so he's working on it.
So thank you for clarifying that. But what is Paul Aldridge then doing? Surely he's going to send a, a bill to the town for his service?
That's all news to me. No idea.
Well, the guy came and met with Brandon, is surely going to expect to, to be paid?
I don't know what his expectations are.
When I talked to Paul, he said he was, he was doing this as a citizen, if you wanna call it, same as me. So, if you get a bill, I would be surprised.
Okay. So, no matter what, I think it would have been nice if administration would have known ahead of time that that meeting was going to occur with that engineer. And I have nothing against them, I know it's reputable, okay? But I mean, just, just by courtesy, if nothing else.
Can I answer that?
Yeah.
Please.
Okay, I did, um, email Brandon, and I asked if councillor Silk and could be there as well as, uh, an engineer. Well, actually, it's just councillor Silk. I didn't even ask for an engineer. I'd have to go back and find it. You want me to find that email or that text? I'm just going off of my memory, so I could be wrong. And, uh, Brandon said, we would prefer just to sit down with myself and Jeff and Brandon. And I, I got thinking about that. Okay, so we're gonna sit down, we're already at odds at, you know, at how high the building is, the building occupancy, which I don't know, and fire, uh, the fire marshal, okay? I cannot answer any of those questions that, you know, Jeff was, was, uh, gonna ask me, okay? So I thought, I'm gonna bring, you know, give somebody a call that I've known, you know, for thirty years, see if he'd be interested to come out and take a, you know, sit down. And he came out on his own accord. He wasn't gonna charge anything to come out and sit in the meeting, just in the hopes that, you know, and I did get the quote, and his quote, which I sent to Gary, and Gary could probably forward that on to all of you.
We didn't get it.
Pardon?
We did not get it.
No, I just sent it just now from here to there. So he could send it to you. And, uh, so, uh, with all that being said, uh, I didn't wanna come to argue with anybody in a meeting, you know, about occupancy. Because I understand occupancy different than what Jeff understands it or what, um, uh, Brandon understood it. Uh, we all of a sudden went from one hundred and fifty people to six hundred people. In fact, I heard more than that. But I, it was six hundred people, I guess was the occupancy that, to me, it was an understanding came back from council because Brandon told us that, it was gonna be six hundred people. I'm thinking, you know, why are we going six hundred people? This is, it's crazy. And, um, so, uh, in talking to Mark, Mark said, what you have to remember is the fire marshal does not care how many toilets are in your building. What he cares is that you can evacuate your building in a reasonable amount of time. And he said, I will design that building so that it will make that fire marshal happy. So, for the fact that if we have a hundred and fifty people in that building, we don't need a special permit. But if we, if for some reason the high school wants to rent the building, and there's gonna be six, seven hundred people in town, and there could be three hundred people in that building, then the school division would probably have to pull the permit. And they would have to abide by, you know, whatever it is that they have to abide by with the fire marshal. So that being said, Mark just said, make sure that they understand that you don't need to have your building occupancy any more than a hundred and fifty people. If we had a hundred and fifty people walking through that building every two hours, because on, on average, you'll be in a building between one and two hours, that would put a number of people through there. It would be the highest income town building that you would have, a- as far as income. It would far surpass the golf course this year. We're never gonna hit six hundred people, maybe once, twice a year. And for us, or for the, you know, for the town to expend that much money for one or two functions a year, it, it doesn't stand to reason. So, the building height was another one. Um, and talking to DA Building, I talked to Sean, and again, we're, we're going, we're, we're trying to do the same thing, but, you know, uh, Jeff is on this track, I'm on this track, and I've been talking to Sean Callahan for probably a month. All of a sudden, it's six feet higher, so I'm thinking, okay, so I'll phone Sean. Sean says, yeah, I got contacted by Brandon and said to get a price for six feet higher. So you have to remember, when you go six feet higher, uh, your costs are gonna go up a, a fair amount. You've got to insulate that, you have to increase your BTU load, you have to increase your, for heating, you have to increase your cooling load. Uh, possibly not the cooling, because the cooling is just gonna sit on the floor. But for sure, or, you know, we're gonna have to increase things in the building that we're gonna have an opportunity to use that building at six, you know, for volleyball. I have no idea. Like I, like I said to one person, you know, we're not building, we're building a town facility, we're not building a West Winds Gym, where they're gonna play volleyball to a lot higher standard than what our community will play. So we are eighteen inches lower with the building that we have than the high school gymnasium. Our beams are twenty-four feet apart, and the high school gym, I've never measured that, but they're a lot closer than that.
Mayor.
So, uh, help me understand.
Okay.
Or maybe Jeff can help me understand. What was the reason for the change of height?
Sure, yeah, when, when Brandon and I were looking this over, we thought, is the current layout accommodating all the things that potentially we could accommodate? And so we wanna make sure we're not, um, eliminating something that could happen in there for an incremental cost. So Brandon said, well, I'll just, I'll go, and this is actually, leads into my next question quite well. He said, let me contact DA and just see what it does look like if we, because it's a twenty-foot building right now, it's a flat ceiling, twenty-foot building. And so when Brandon was looking at things, he says, you know, volleyball is ideally twenty-four to twenty-six, basketball's ideally, you know, twenty-three to twenty-four. And this is ideally, we recognize that. But we thought, if the cost is small, why wouldn't we look at it? Because now we haven't eliminated activities that can take place in the facility, or at least it wouldn't eliminate them, I don't think that's a fair statement, but we would accommodate them better, uh, based on if it's a, I think, I think it ended up being, and I, I won't, I can't be quoted on this, I think it was like thirty thousand dollars to go the extra six feet, just from a structure point of view, something like that. And so we were saying, is that a reasonable, is that a reasonable addition to make sure you don't ever have height issues for whatever activities going on in there? So of course, we've been exploring all of those things. I would hate to build this thing and then eliminate what we could do in it. I think that would be, uh, short sighted.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so that, that actually, I don't wanna circle all the way back to conceptual drawings, but, uh, let me tell you what we came out of yesterday, and I did appreciate that Mark came down. Um, one of the challenges we've had and one of the, the discussions that's been difficult between Brandon and Gib is, um, things like, uh, I'm sorry, Gib, you were just talking about, but things like occupancy, that's been a big one. And, and some of those, do we need a fire alarm system or a fire suppression system? Or, you know, do we have the right interior cladding for fire purposes and all that stuff? And we don't know, because Gib's not an engineer and I'm not an engineer.
It's all been engineered, and everything was engineered.
I appreciate what Dave did, Dave's not an engineer. I do appreciate what Mr. Rose has done, and it's got us a concept, but he's not an engineer. And I'm not building the floor plan that he's drawn, saying he's an engineer. So we just, what was great with Mark is Mark said, look, one of the services I can offer is a code review. So I can take this and look it over, and then I can tell you, code will impact you here, here, and here. And if you increase your occupancy, and Gib's a hundred percent correct, if we went from a hundred and twenty, I think was the low, to six hundred, we gotta put like ten more toilets in each bathroom. You know, which, which now all of a sudden, from a square footage and a cost point of view, really goes up substantially. And so we don't wanna, we don't wanna do those kind of things that just blow the, the costs out of the water by, but we also wanna make sure that we don't eliminate a number of things that could take place in there, and that's still a bit ambiguous. We know the core stuff happening there. You know, that's fairly clear. But we don't know what it all could be used for down the road. And so, uh, one of the things that, that Mark has agreed to do is review the existing floor plan, talk to all the parties about potential programming, and then do a code review based on that. What do you need? What is the impact if you go to this? What's the impact if you go to that? And I think that's great, because it's bringing the two things together finally. Where those things are together, and then we know what the implications are. Then he'd do some architectural site servicing, he'll look at the utilities. Um, and then, uh, what he's calling a class D cost estimate, which is really a high level cost estimate. It doesn't get into the weeds at all, just to get a feel. And I think we left that meeting yesterday agreeing, I think, Gib, we thought that would be a great step forward in getting us to a conceptual drawing that could go to the public. You know, because it, and, and that Mark would be the one to facilitate that. And I'm a hundred percent on side with that. I talked with Mark about four thirty today, just because we were tidying up one thing. And I, and I'm hopeful that moves it forward in his hands now. And then we're not arguing about whether or not the code change. And then we're not arguing about whether or not the code changes if we go to this or that, right? He'll deal with that. That's my hope.
Counselor Barnes.
So, Jeff, help me understand the concept of so many toilets. When I'm looking at the high school, when you have 700 or 800 people in there watching a really important basketball game, we've got, what, four toilets in the men's room? Four toilets in the ladies' room? There's a total of eight? So where do we come up with all these numbers of more toilets and why? It doesn't make sense to me.
One thing I wanna know is, how do you know how many toilets are in the ladies' room?
Well, I don't know. I'm just guessing they're equal opportunity. If the guys have four, the women wanna have as many.
Thank you.
Maybe they have more.
Actually, the women are supposed to, by code, have more toilets than the men, because a urinal counts as a toilet.
Yeah, anyways.
Counselor, new question. It's just what building code says it is, and I agree, Gibb, it's one thing we agree on very well, that a 600 occupancy and having, Brandon did a drawing for us of what like 15 toilets per side looks like. And it's outrageous. I mean, you would have so few times when you would have the need for that. And so I 100% agree, we have to find that balance. We're not eliminating a whole bunch of things that can be done, but we're still, you gotta keep that in check, otherwise you just spent 400 grand on toilets, you know, and the plumbing and other thing, it gets crazy, right? So I'm actually quite optimistic about using Hasagawa to get us to a conceptual drawing that has the code implications included in the design, and we're both happy with. And it's within the number that council approved for getting to the conceptual design. One thing we haven't, I'll tell you right now, I don't wanna disclose his numbers, 'cause we're negotiating. What Mark and I haven't agreed on is, he also included a line item for 3D renderings of the elevations, but it's a big number. I was actually quite surprised, and so I just said, "Look, what if we, what if we have good elevation drawings like you have and we have good floor plan drawings? That may be sufficient for what we need now." And I don't, the 3D renderings are cool, but they come with a price, right? And so, we were just talking about what were the implications of taking that out and how could we get, make sure we got good elevation drawings and everything like that. So that was some of our discussion tonight. But I think as far as, as far as getting someone involved to get us where we need to go, I would say we're actually, at least when we left the meeting yesterday, I think we're on the same page. Where it's going to be a little bit interesting, and where my next question was, is who does ultimately decide the scale and the function of the facility? Because as Gibb's pointed out, we don't agree on some of those points like height. And maybe, I don't know if we do or not, I think we agree that we wanna keep our occupancy down so it doesn't get crazy, but maybe we wanna push that a little bit more, but that comes with the cost. Like at some point, we have to jointly figure out what, you know, I'll give another example, and Gibb, I know this one's a thorn in your side, but is there showers in this or not? Because that changes the plumbing and the code implications and all that around that, and it's a cost that we incur that we don't know what the use will be. So at some point, we have to figure out, are we doing more locker room shower-style setup or that's not the setup? Because I know where Gibb feels on that, and I don't have a strong opinion one way or another on it, but it's just all those little things that until Mark can, we come to a conclusion on those things, Mark can't finalize a conceptual drawing.
Counselor Silk, Counselor Brown, oh, sorry, Gibb, go ahead first.
Well, just to go back to review floor plan, I sent the, and you've got a floor plan, right? So you can see that there are no showers in there, so then you know where I stand on the no showers, okay?
I know there are no showers.
All right, so I sent the floor plan off to Mark Hasagawa, and he has come back to me virtually, just even today. The floor plan looks fine, he can work with the floor plan, he would be able to do everything that we need to do to put this to construction without a problem. So if we have to have a shower in there or two showers, I guess so be it. But remember that that's one item, and I realize you're probably gonna have to go in there and clean the toilets every day, but that's one item right there that, especially the way things are right now, that's been shut down completely all across the province. There are no showers being used anywhere in Alberta at this point in time. And are they going to, you know, are we gonna look farther into the future and say, "Okay, then possibly public buildings will not have showers in them because of, you know, the possibility of contamination in that shower?" So, you know, I think, can we put the plumbing in and have it there, you know, available so that, you know, you have a drain and you got water in the walls, so that you can do that? Yes, we can do that at a very minimal cost, but start throwing showers in at about, I'm gonna just say, because everything is touchless and mixing valves and everything else that you have to have, you know, you're gonna be pushing 4,000 bucks a shower, easily. And that's about four times the cost of your toilets. So, you wanna bump it up, put the toilets in. Bump up your occupancy, putting toilets in and forget the showers and, you know, basically for the cost of the, you know, the cost of the showers. But my opinion is 95%, and talk to other facilitators, you know, at the school, they're not using the showers. Hockey is not using the showers. So it just isn't something, even when they can use the showers, they're not using the showers.
Go home.
Yep.
Counselor Silk, and then Counselor Barnes, and then the mayor.
So Jeff's alluded to it, and I agree, that we have to decide what this building is. Are we building it for the West Wind School Division use or are we building it for the community use? Now, Gibb has mentioned that the height of the building is really only about 18 inches shorter than what the high school gym is. So if you're looking at 18 inches for volleyball...
I'll verify that tomorrow for you and get back to you, and then you can email it to everybody.
All right, so then there's 18 inches, two feet. As much as we would love to build it to high school or collegiate or whatever standards, it's still a community facility, and they can still use it based upon what we have already conceptually agreed, or not agreed, but looked at. So I think we have to recognize it's a community facility, and that also speaks to occupancy. If the West Wind School Division wants to have a tournament in there and there's gonna be 400 people, then it's up to them. If it goes beyond the code, that they have to get a permit to have that many people in there. Same is true for the town, that if we're gonna have a Remembrance Day ceremony or something else of that nature inside there, then maybe we have to look at something like that. But, I mean, I look at, the occupancy of this room here is 120 people, and we've got two bathrooms with two or three toilets in each one of them, so.
So my thoughts were, if we're going to build this to a standard for the high school, then they need to be putting up some money. I mean, this is a community structure that we're putting up, and so if they want it and we wanna put it up that way, then they gotta come up and pony up with some money. That's all there is to it. And if they're not prepared or willing, then we build it as a community-use facility, period. That's my opinion. Because we can't afford to be building this for the school division. They've got the money. If they're putting 300,000 bucks in McGrath and Raymond and they're saying to us, "We don't have nothing for you," well, then too bad. Then you'll get to use our community facility. And that's my feelings, and they're very strong. And I think that if they want to use it and they want it to go to their standard, then give us 300,000 bucks and we'll do whatever. We can facilitate that.
Thank you. Mayor.
Okay, I think both of you have almost answered my questions. So that goes back to you, Counselor Brown and Counselor Silk, is what is the appetite of the school board to participate in that rec facility? You had a meeting with them. Help me understand, what is the appetite? I know that tight with their budget this year, very tight, and it's possibly not this year, so we'll see any dollars. But help me understand.
Yeah, go ahead.
Counselor Silk, step in at any moment. I am too sassy or something. Anyway, okay, so this is what I can tell you. What I can tell you is Counselor Silk and myself were super excited to Zoom in. We were supposed to meet them in person and then weren't, and then were, and then weren't, and ended up we were on Zoom, so that was fabulous. And what we did was, we met with them, we gave them the pitch, we gave them the drawings that you all have. They saw exactly what you have seen. We told them that we had budgeted a million dollars. We represented council well. We gave them a list of all of the, all of the things that could be in that facility. We were answered, they had tons of questions, Mayor, is what I can tell you. They were upbeat about it. We talked to them about partnership. Thank you, Counselor Barnes, I appreciate your passion. We talked to them about that very thing. You've been, I said, "We've been impressed with your partnership in other communities, Raymond, McGrath, Sterling, all of those things. We would just like to be in partnership with you for this project." So I would love to say they're all in at $300,000, but all that I have been told from that meeting, Counselor Silk and I answered their questions, they were positive, they have, they went in camera, of course, they discussed it, and I was told that they might have more questions that they would like us to answer at their next meeting. That's all I know. So other than that, it's pure speculation.
So it's not a no?
It's not a no. That's right, actually, that's exactly right.
That's good information.
They were, they were positive. We explained to them about the budget and, which is why we wanted to talk to them, because we know that we're all getting our budget right now as well, right? So that's why we tried to get it in as they're trying to budget for everything, but I, like I said, it's pure speculation. They're getting back to us with more questions, and we will answer them to the best of our ability. We did say that we would like to know as soon as possible whether they're in or you're out.
So, if you don't mind me...
Oh, sorry, one more thing, Mayor.
Merry Christmas, here it is.
The one thing, the one thing we were crystal clear on, and that was, that we feel as council that we need to run this rec center as a business, that we want to be really smart with the taxpayers' money, and they appreciated that. That was something that they were like, "Oh, this isn't just gonna be another building that's gonna sit idle. No, that's not how we're managing this." So, sorry, go ahead.
So, when is your next meeting with them?
I would love to have that answer.
So they don't have a set time?
They don't, they're not like us and meet every, 'cause they were all zoomed in on their, from their homes as well, so I don't have a date.
So they will contact you?
That's what they said. That's correct.
Thank you.
So Mr. Schaefer and then Counselor Bengry.
Dennis brought up some interesting, you know, my feelings as well, and I think a lot of feelings are the same. But I think that this building can be built to any standard that we want, according to how West Wind was involved in the football field in Raymond, how they were involved in the library in McGrath. It would be interesting for you to find out, did they request or have, you know, "Here's 300,000, spend it how you want," or did they have caveats on that? Because I think that you'll probably find that they had no caveats. They donated that money to them, and they had zero caveat. So I don't think that, you know, that being said, I don't think that that weighs very heavily how we build this building. I don't think that they should be able to put a caveat on this building. I think it should be something we could do as a community and what we think our community will use.
Good.
So, I would love for them to have caveats, because that means that they're giving us money. And if they're giving us money, I will build it as high or throw in 20 toilets or whatever they're after. I'm all supporting it, right? But that means that they're putting money into it. But I 100% agree with you, if they're not going to, if they're not going to put money forward for the building, then they're not gonna tell us what we're gonna use it for. And when they do use it, they will pay.
That's not exactly...
So big, deep discounts, like at the pool?
Counselor, I don't wanna go down that road.
Counselor Bengry and then Mayor.
Gibb, in the whole complex of this building, fire suppression is probably one of the most costly things there is. And I understand when there's children involved, if we had some kind of a, I don't know what you'd call it, sort of an area for the kids to gather while mom's out walking the tracks, we have to have fire suppression in that area. Is that right?
I don't, okay. Number one, there's no fire suppression in the building whatsoever until you raise the occupancy. You get the occupancy up to a certain level. If you go to 600, you have fire suppression, you have fire alarms. I think it's 300, you have to have fire alarms. But as long as you have two exits from that room, wherever you're holding people, as long as you have two exits, you're meeting your fire responsibilities there. And that's what Hasagawa will look at, and he will approve, and it will be up to standard. And he has, in principle, told me, he said, after looking at the drawing, he says, "There is nothing wrong with this drawing. I can take this to print or to draft." So, yeah, we don't need fire suppression unless you start bumping occupancy, and we don't wanna bump occupancy for one or two activities.
Yeah, Mayor.
So, we were talking about the involvement of the school board possibly, and keeping it a community rec center possibly, depending of the involvement. What about the county involvement? Are we any closer to know what their desire is to participate in there? And are they at a point where they are putting it in form of motion, the same way as we have our million-dollar in the budget? Where are they at?
Can I answer that?
You can.
Until you make up your mind, they're in Limbo. So if you, you haven't made up your mind that you're building a building. So until you say, you pull that trigger, we're gonna start this building, this is the date, I guarantee council, they'll have to come up with something, and this is what I've been told by two council members, is they are waiting for the town to make up their mind what we're building and how we're doing it.
Okay. So here it brings me back to the same process of trying to understand where we're going. We have put, in principle, you're correct, in the budget, $1 million. It's in principle, meaning that we want to do all the due diligence possible. The engineering is starting to be part of that due diligence process, and I appreciate that very much. We need to still have a sense of the cost, total cost of what it is, because all that has implication not only on this budget, but on future budgets. Sooner or later, it will have ripple effect. Because if this year we have $1 million, but imagine the project being maybe 2.8 million, let's say, or 2.5, or whatever it might be, I don't know. But based on the $330 square foot or 230 to 330, that's around the realm of the project, we still need to know what the public thinks about future effect on that. And so there is something that council also has to decide. We are going to do a polling, but is this council, and that will be important for the future, is this council going to accept the result of that polling? If it is negative, and say, there won't be no rec centers, that's one option. On the other side, if the polling comes positive, there is another issue that needs to be looked at, is at what time do we go to the group who is involved with the potential construction and say green light? And one is that, at which point, there is money to be raised, we know that we have set aside a million dollar, we know that the pickleball association, according to Counselor Silk, may be able to come up with about 300,000, that's what you were talking about, am I correct? Around there anyways, possibly. But that's only 1.3 million. So if it comes much higher than that, which at this point, we do not know, the gap has to be made by some fundraising somewhere. The school, the county, philanthropists, there could be a whole sort of people, people from the town, all that is possible. But if there is a gap still, how do we close that gap? But if there is a gap still, how do we close that gap? And if the people really want that because the polls shows they're in support, then it means that following years, we will need to push again further projects that are capital budget, such as road and sidewalks, water and sewer, further down the line. There'll come a time where that will require tax increases to be able to have them completed. So those are question, uh, council needs to, to grapple with. Because it has true implication, maybe not for this council, because this is the last budget for this council. But surely the legacy of this council is not going to be, well, you now have the rec center, but for the next ten years, guess what guys, you're going to have taxes you're going to pay. There is a reasonable amount of tax that can be raised for a new facilities. I totally understand that. But it has, we need to understand what it means. And so does the taxpayer who is going to answer those polls.
Okay, you want me to answer this? In the future, just give me one question at a time, cause I've forgotten all the other questions, okay?
I'm sorry, I should-
All right, so, so here's-
Didn't you tell me that before to stop firing questions?
Okay, so, here is the first thing, cost. And I think Jeff and I, Brandon and Haskow, we had this discussion yesterday. So um, I had been bringing in costs for the building, we were at one point three million. Do you remember that?
Yes.
Now we're at one point nine five or something million, correct? Have you seen that?
No.
Okay, so then, then in your mind, we're still at one point three, right?
Well, I'm, I'm somewhere according to what was shown-
That was, that was the last one that I brought to council, is one point three million.
Oh, what, no, I don't have any-
Okay, how much money did you just say that we have? One point three million. So do we need to raise any more funds to build this building? And that was the big problem that I was running across from Kevin Quentin, who sits on the ad hoc committee. He said, to me, it looks like you don't need any more money. Why are we going out and raising money? This is a problem. And so just to put it in terms that everybody can understand, for one point three million, we have bought a house. And in that house, we can play every sport that you wanna play except for one. Basketball. Can't play basketball in there until we spend a little bit more money. Twenty six thousand dollars to be exact, to get two retractable hoops to put into that building. So one point three, uh, we can play fourteen out of fifteen sports that we can, and that gives you a building. All the other uh, money that, that we're talking, the six hundred thousand dollars we're talking about, is you're going out and buying furniture for that house. You're putting in a parking lot, you're putting in lighting on the outside that's gonna be nice lighting. You're going to have a lot of other amenities that you wouldn't have. And like I told Jeff, if we raise more money, we'll do more things. But then, that was a red flag for Jeff because he said, that, that raises the cost of our upkeep on that building. You know, like if we wanted to put a kitchen in, then that will raise the upkeep. And in my mind, I, I, I think that's in, that's very minor to what you could rent that kitchen for. If you had to, you could probably pay all of the utilities that you would have. If we raise the initial cost to put it in of seventy or eighty thousand dollars, whatever it might be, to put in a nice kitchen and have something there that you could do concessions, you can uh, put it out to continuing ed, you know, the people downtown for cooking classes, you can do a number of things that you could use that for. But are we willing to spend the seventy thousand dollars if we don't have it? And short answer, no, we stop wherever we run out of money.
Mayor and then councillor Salk.
So you're basing it on your estimate of a building-
One point three.
That is actually, what you're describing to me, you're describing a shell?
Insulated, heated flooring, paint on the walls.
But a shell.
Yeah.
So it's not a rec facility, it's a shell of a rec facility?
No, like you can play, you can play fourteen or fifteen or however many sports, or you play marbles in there if you want, it'll be heated.
So here is-
You have bathrooms.
Okay, so then help me understand something, maybe, maybe I'm losing something in between. The first time you came to a council, you presented an eight thousand square foot, nine thousand square foot building.
Mm-hmm.
Why, and that was a million point three? While I was son-
Sixteen, sixteen thousand eight hundred square feet for one point three.
Yeah. So what was the eight thousand dollar, was it eight hundred thousand?
It was, it was uh, eight thousand square foot building, gymnasium only.
So those are, where the discrepancy is here, is the need to have proper quotes.
Proper what?
Quotes on, on the-
I have proper quotes, they're not signed.
Okay, yes, and we need them signed. That's what we need.
If that's all that's holding the town back, I'll get them all signed, if that's what you want.
Well, I think administration needs to look at that carefully. Because it needs to be all code, all requirement uh, really tested there. I am not a engineer, I'm not a builder.
Can I just answer that one question? Administration will not know whether it's up to code or not. I've told my sons forever, you put the pipes in straight, when the inspector comes in, and I'm not saying that we don't do everything up to code. But if I put my pipes in straight and the owner walks in and they see the pipes in straight, they don't know if it's up to code or not, but they like the job that's done. And that's what I'm saying is administration are not builders. So then they've got to rely on people that are builders in the community. And if, if you want signed contracts, I guess, like, how do I get Ron Skow to sign a contract when he is coming in there on a volunteer basis? And, and how do I, you know, I'm, as far as the equipment and stuff that's going in there, if it's fifty thousand dollars or sixty thousand dollars, and he's doing the whole project for seventy thousand dollars, how do I get him to go in there and say, yeah, well, he's not gonna wanna sign? There is nobody that's going to do something for free to put on there, hey, I'm gonna do this all for free. If we run into problems, then we have to overcome those problems. And we have to either cut back somewhere else, or we gotta go out and raise some more money. But at this point in time, for one point three million dollars, you have a building that is completely finished, not just a shell, completely finished, with heating, plumbing, the walls are painted, doors, it's ready to go. They walk through the door, you can play whatever sport you want, except for basketball at this point in time.
Okay, so-
Can we? I, I think we need to take a break, but I don't know that we're gonna get anywhere.
Jeff? Opened up a heck of a can of worms tonight. That's one point one, uh, A two, and five points. So what I'm thinking is, cause we, we, we cover a lot of ground, which is just fine. Uh, what I'd like to know, maybe if we take a few minutes out, we, we didn't order any food, but Jill went down and stored some ten minutes ago, cause it looks like we would be here a little longer than I thought. Really what it comes down to is, I, I think, and give by all means, if you disagree with this, please say it. But I think using Mark Hasegawa and what he's proposing to review and, and do up the, the floor plan, do a code, uh, his words, sorry, a code review, a preliminary code review, site servicing review and class D cost estimates. I'm very comfortable that that gets us to a conceptual drawing that we can take to the public. I, I'm, I'm a hundred percent fine with that. I think we have a lot of stuff to determine after that point. I think we got a lot of ground to cover still. But I, I'm very comfortable that we go ahead with that under the, the finances that you've allowed already to do that. I have a number of other questions I think we'll, we'll defer to a week from tonight, that we can continue to discuss a little bit, but thereafter the conceptual drawing piece, right? So we have something to the public. The only thing I wanna be clear on is you as a council want to be able to, do you wanna be able to have some discretion as to what this thing is being used for and when? So how it affects things like occupancy? And the pros and cons of that, we have to weigh all that out, right? And all those, those implications, or are we turning that over to the association to say, this is what you're building the town? This is what we think you should have? What's the role here of the town in finalizing the conceptual drawing? And I think if, and, and I think either way is fine, cause Mark needs to know that too. Because if it means it's six council meetings and fifty trips to Cardston, it's way different than a phone call, give a phone call to Jeff and then send the drawings, right? It's just a very different monster. And, and so I think for tonight, maybe if we just pause on that and have some idea of how involved you wanna be in establishing the conceptual, I'll go from there. Cause, cause I think we're in a good spot now after yesterday to get, to get to that point.
We have a park and rec uh, group that, and we have an ad hoc committee. There is nothing wrong with having them involved, but I also want somebody from administration to be there. That they are the one that deal with it, it does not bother me at all.
Gib, did you wanna say something?
I was just gonna, and that's what I said, you threw so many questions out. Another one that came back to me was um, the fact that, you know, this survey and everything else and the uncertainty. I don't know if you can, uh, from what you just said, how you can feel that county is all over this to try and put funding into this project when we don't know what the town is doing. You, you know, in, in principle, you have said, yes, we want to do this. And in principle, the county has said the same thing. They're waiting for you as a council and to, to make that decision so that they can bring it up in their council meeting.
Okay.
Go ahead.
There wouldn't be nothing wrong with a county to let us know that in principle, they have set aside so many thousands of dollars.
Did, did he not mention that in principle at the county, at that meeting, at the ad hoc committee? I've had it from two council members in principle, you know, just verbal. And that's all you're giving is, you know, to me, well, that's all I'm hearing, I don't read your minutes or anything else. So if you're putting your minutes, I'm sure it's in their minutes as well. And we could probably go back and see. So maybe, maybe Jeff could check the minutes and see what they are doing. I think uh, Murray was gonna get ahold of Jeff and see where the town is at at this point in time, not sure if he had.
He and I have talked.
Okay, so then you should have an understanding of where they're at. Where, what, what did he say?
The one thing I don't do is predict councils well. So they, they have, um, I'm trying to think, we haven't talked for a while. It is part of their budget deliberations. That's about as well as I could say is where it's at. That, that's as much as I could say. Yeah.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I don't know any word.
Are you okay councillor? And then councillor Bengri.
So I just have a, I just have a question, uh, mayor. So I, I sit on both of those, the park, the Parks and Rec and the Parks and Rec ad hoc committees. So just to be clear, you're saying you would prefer any of the questions coming from Jeff to go to that committee rather than coming to this council, is that what you're saying?
No.
Okay.
Jeff, Jeff is trying to say, uh, they are now, need to have a little bit more of a firm up idea on a conceptual design of the uh, building. And I'm thinking, you guys know what kind of-
Okay.
-of sports and whatever you want in there? I don't know, I've never been privy to that.
So what I can say is that you're absolutely right. Until we have that from Hasegawa, yeah, absolutely, we'll take it to our Parks and Rec, both boards and get their, get however they-
You meet Thursday.
And then you'll bring it back to council?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So I think that will be the easiest way for us to do that.
So what I can tell you is both of those boards have seen the original, not the original, the most recent drawing that you all have seen, which is this one. Um, they have seen this one, they brought up some great points, couns, or not councillor, um, Gib, Mr. Schaefer went home, changed some wording, he didn't change anything else, he changed wording in here and he critiqued it um, so that it fit the direction of the Parks and Rec ad hoc committee, which was fantastic. So the one we have before you, the one that you've seen, that's the one that we, they approved. Is my understanding, is that your understanding councillor Salk?
Who saw, the ad hoc?
Yes, the ad hoc. The ad hoc committee saw this one, you changed the wording.
Yeah, and one of the things changed, so I did.
They had a few things changed, it wasn't size, it was just, it was honestly wording. That was it, they changed the wording.
So it seems to me that if, if you work with administration on that, it would be possibly a better way of doing it.
All of it.
Councillor Bengri.
Gib, I've only got, I, I wanna look into the future of this for the community. We've got a sixteen thousand square foot footprint right now. Would there be a possibility? I don't know what the range and life of our skating rink is gonna be. Could a skating rink be incorporated a, as an addition to this building? Could a wall be moved and so forth?
Uh, you're not gonna move any walls.
No, but I mean, open it up.
Is, is that area up there on the hill large enough?
No.
And that's something that you would have to look at. If you picked up the Charlie Cheeseman Ice Center, took it up there, no, it's probably not big enough. You know, for, for something like that. If you wanna add a little bit there for, you know, do another hundred feet on it and, you know, do another gymnasium, yeah, we probably have enough room for another gymnasium. But now I'm gonna, and hopefully, I'm gonna say, if we were looking to the future, in my opinion, this building would have been already started and finished. And that's, you know, the money has been there and the community was behind it a hundred percent just, just before COVID, and we were talking about a forty thousand square foot building for a lot more money. We're now down to almost half the size of the building and we're less than, we're, we're quite a bit less than half the size of the forty thousand square foot building we were doing. But all of a sudden, you know, COVID derailed us, if I might say that, you know? So I don't know what's changed from the forty thousand square foot building to, you know, sixteen thousand eight hundred, and maybe nothing has changed, maybe we always had those questions. Go ahead Maggie, if you, you can answer that.
You said something that is really cut my, my ear. You say you had the, the hundred percent of the support of the community. How did you know that? If we had known that-
Did I say we had a hundred percent of the community? I meant the hundred per, we were, we were in agreements in here, sorry. Let me take that back, I thought we were in agreements in here.
Well, not in agreement with a six million dollar uh, facilities.
That was about five.
Never, in the beginning, were we ever in support of it.
Okay, I was misunderstood.
I wanted to throw out something. Personally, I was never in support of a five or six million dollar project, never. I had more negative phone calls in my office, my ear was being bent constantly at that because of the tax implications. Then when we brought it down to where we're at, all of a sudden I'm getting people who are, now they're on board because it's not as bad. I still got some of those negative nannies out there, but they're saying to me, hey, you know what, this is something that might work, just give us a little more information. And they're looking forward to the meeting, the public meeting so that we can talk. They're looking forward to the survey with some information. So I don't think there's a big influx of people out there that are saying, no way, we're gonna go with that at any cost. I think there's people now that are interested because of where we're at now. And I think that's where the council is more in agreement. Cause I don't think this council was in agreement with a bigger cost item at all, cause I wasn't.
I, I agree, I, then I was misunderstanding what I thought that we were at five million dollar building, the ad hoc committee had put that forward, did we not?
We did.
And in principle, uh, the monies was being investigated to where we could get the monies from, whether we were borrowing money. Um, that was my understanding, okay? So if it wasn't council's understanding, I'm assuming when we go to an ad hoc committee and we get those, that information, that's coming from council. But that being said, I appreciate the-
The, the ad hoc is coming up with the ideas and they bring it back to us so we can discuss it.
And, and I thought it had gone back to council.
No, not yet. But we're getting closer and I'm feeling much more positive about it myself.
And like you said, I've had probably, I've had nothing really negative. And I've put it on my Facebook page and it's been out there, it's been shared probably just to get an idea what the community thought. And I think that that plan that Paula has, has probably been shared about maybe fifteen times. So a few times fifteen, times, you know, four hundred friends, it's been out to thirty, two hundred- It's been out to thirty-two hundred people have actually seen this project. Um, unfortunate, and I had to write on there, please, whether you're positive or negative, please comment on this and share it. And we had lots of shares, but, uh, we probably had maybe sixty comments that I had, personal comments back on the building. And like you, very few. I think we had one person that said, oh, great, COVID, we're gonna drive COVID again. Which, you know, I mean, I think it's something, COVID's something we're gonna have to learn to live with.
Now we gotta deal with it, that's right.
Okay. Uh, Jeff, are we in a space where we can move on? Do you think we have enough information?
I think I'll hold the rest of my stuff till next meeting. Cause that went a lot longer. And that's okay. Just gotta get this all hammered out, right? So we'll talk more about kind of that post-conceptual design, uh, at the next meeting and what the roles of each of the parties are. And I think if, if we're agreed to go ahead and, I think we are, Hasagawa, I think we can get to that point.
Sure. Appreciate your time. Really appreciate you coming. Thank you.
Love to take a break.
Yeah, all in favor? I think supper's coming at seven.
What was the timing on that, Joe?
Just after seven.
Did you say we are?